Okay, good afternoon. I am honored to introduce our speaker for the economic address for lunch today. This individual is a seasoned leader with over 25 years of experience in North Carolina's government, education, and nonprofit sectors. He's been budget advisor to Governor Mike Easley, president of the Golden Leaf Foundation, and interim chancellor at East Carolina University. Additionally, he's been an adjunct at NC State and UNC, just to name a few of his big accomplishments. While he was at the Golden Leaf Foundation, he oversaw the administration of hundreds of grants awarded to support economic development in North Carolina through hundreds of millions of dollars. He is the founder and owner of a public policy firm launched in 2020 and provides strategic counsel to over 60 clients. He holds VAs in economics and English from Notre Dame and a master's in public administration from Syracuse. So without further ado, please welcome Dan Gerlach to the podium to provide the right economic address.
What a pleasure it is to be here in Monroe. I'm glad to be back. I was here in February talking. I met some of you when I was talking at the E.C. Groundhog Day event. And so I'm glad to be invited back. Lisa and I used to work together. One worked in Raleigh. I'm glad she's got promoted to come work in Monroe. And that's her career here. I have to recognize the special talent that she offers to you. And so Lisa, it's great to be back with you as well. Also, I've been working since I was 10 years old. I was a caterer's son. I thought your caterers did a great job. And so I would be remiss if I didn't thank them for their, you know, we thank them for their, you know. I'm here today to talk a little bit about your city, where it stands in the North Carolina context, where it stands in the American context in terms of how we're going to move forward. I think there are a lot of places I've talked to some of you where they said, are you going to give us good news? Are you going to give us bad news? I think it's very productive time to be in Monroe, and I'm very optimistic about your future. And I couldn't really say that in a lot. I could say that in a lot of places, but I'd be lying. So I'm glad to be here. Just a little bit about this. So we're going to talk a little bit. You had, I think, a morning full of numbers. And so I don't want to disappoint you. We're not going to break away from that right away. I'm going to go through a few slides and then go by any questions. Of course, I used to work in economic development when I was giving away money for a living and when I was taking away from the state budget office. I've been on both sides of that. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might offer. I'm also currently working on economic development grants at the state level that you all may have an interest in. Be glad to give you the inside scoop on that. So one thing is when we talk about jobs, you read these kind of monthly reports or annual reports or anything. There's three different ways you figure out how many jobs are actually out there. And one is they ask you a household employment. What the Census Bureau, this is what a phone used to be like for some of y'all. They call you and say, hey, y'all have a job. Are you working? And you say yes or no. And so if you say yes, they count you as employed. And if they say no, you go, okay. If you're not having a job right now, are you looking for a job? And if you say yes, I'm looking for a job, but I don't have one now, you're counted as unemployed. If you say no, I'm not employed and I'm not looking for a job, they don't count you at all. Now, this is a survey done, you know, they don't call up every household in, you know, Monroe or in North Carolina or the United States. They do a sample of this and try to guess from there. So it's not really accurate, but at least it gives us a little bit of data of what's going on at the city, county, state, and national level. So that happens every month. And so it's not the most reliable. Then you have the payroll enrollment. The payroll surveys, they go, they talk employers, representative set of employers. Maybe somebody in the restaurant industry. Maybe somebody in the manufacturing industry. Maybe somebody in construction. Maybe somebody in the business services. Maybe somebody in government. And they say, okay, we're going to look at your payrolls. These are also reported monthly, but these are generally reported at the lowest level at the county level. And then we have, for the real nerds, and look at me, and there's nothing screams nerd when you look at me. I mean, Paul, is the quarterly census of employment wages, which is the most accurate data we have, but it is dated. So I was excited because the data finally came out for the first quarter of 2024 last week. So I've been trying to get some stuff together on that for you all to talk about. If we go back and we look 20 years ago, in 2004, and then here we have bars here. I think you have, some of you have the packet, but those of you who don't have the packets, the blue bar, now, this has not any to do with any college affiliation or anything. So don't get, you know, worried about that because Notre Dame and the Panthers both got, it was not good for football for me this weekend. The blue on the left is Monroe. The orange in the middle is Union County. And the grayish thing, which Excel pointed out for me, is the state. So if you start it off and say 2004, we're all kind of, that's the baseline. And then the further faster the bars go up, that means you grew faster. So you see over time here, if you look every five years between 2004 and 2024, is what happens is actually what happened is Monroe kind of in that time went down in employment for 10 years and then started to recover. What happened? Well, remember in 2000 to 2008, what was happening is that there's a lot of shedding in manufacturing jobs. It's a heavy manufacturing area. A lot of textiles, apparel, and furniture, which people like when NAFTA came in. It was not after that, it was after the WTO admitted China. That really, that started accelerating. So in any case, Monroe has to grow and catch up. Union County is growing like a weed. And so the orange bar is going up fairly quick. And then you see the gray bar, the state was growing fairly quickly too. Dominated by a little county to the west of here in a county where I live, Wade County itself. Now, but if you look at the last 15 years, you get what you see is Monroe has started catching up, right? Then the difference between how fast Monroe is growing and how fast Union County is growing is far closer. And then you see that in fact that Monroe and Union County are growing far faster than the state. So whenever anybody gives you data, you have to figure out where do you stand. It depends on where you start measuring from. And so that is a tricky business indeed. But what does it say? Here's what this says to me. As an economic development professional, and I'm looking across North Carolina, I'm saying Monroe has more capacity. In other words, it has people here who have been used to working, you know, maybe punching a clock or something like that. But it is not like so squeezed out of capacity. Now, you don't have any room to grow if you do. Now, I know you heard, you know, there's infrastructure needs and everything like that. I'll go into that in a second. But what I'm saying is Monroe has a history of handling, you know, decent sized growth. And then Monroe has been accelerating. Momentum generates momentum. What do I mean by that? When things start going well, they go well for everybody. Because I would rather have your problems than dealing with the growth, residential, commercial, industrial, than go to some other places where, oh, the plant that bought 40% of our water, paid for 40% of our sewer just went away. Oh, you know, people are, you know, we're a rapidly aging population. I was downtown before I came over here. I went downtown and I bought coffee. I was staying at the coffee place. And I don't know where y'all have the water, but there's a lot of mothers with children, you know, running around that place. So it's a growing fiber place. And if I were somebody visiting, I'm like, that is what we're talking about. Because I don't know if there's a convention or whatnot, or you just put it on because I was coming in town. But that would be a good sign. If I'm an economic development recruiter, you know, coming into town, that's a good sign. You're accelerating. So what types of jobs are there? Here's what the theory of the case is in North Carolina. You know, when we started the state, of course, a lot of people, maybe some of y'all's, maybe some of y'all worked on farms, I don't know. At Golden Leaf, I will tell you that everybody I ever met who ever wanted money from Golden Leaf, they had a daddy or a momma or somebody working, growing back somewhere. And so it's their money I needed to give it to. But what I would tell you is that agriculture is not a big employer in our state right now. It is an important industry in our state. You will tell Steve Troxler, Dan Gerlach said so, but it only employs about 1% of the people employed in our state. All right, directly. It's big because of everything that comes with it. All the food processing, all the grocery stores, everything else, all the restaurants. But what I'm telling you is that that's part of it. And that's where people used to work. Then what did they do? We are a manufacturing state. This is a manufacturing county. Them people went and they worked in the textile mills. They worked making apparel plants. They worked in furniture kind of north of here. They worked in all these industries. But basically, and that's changed. Because what has happened now, you go to a spinning plant right now and you go in and somebody is the state and they bring all this cotton in and then they have a couple people pushing some buttons and out the other end is yarn. And that used to take several hundred people to do so. And those jobs were not as well paying as manufacturing jobs in other places. So that's something we're thinking about. But then what we thought, okay, agriculture's dead, manufacturing's dead. So the only thing we got going on is all the service industry stuff. And so that's part of the brands. But here is what happens in Union County. And in Union County, when I look at the share of people working in construction, you know, the state is about 5%. One in every 20 people employ, out of every 20 persons employed in North Carolina works in construction. But here in this county, it's about one in seven. And with everything going on, it kind of makes sense, right? And these are good paying jobs. These are jobs that pay above what the average worker in your county makes. And frankly, it's more than the average construction worker when you look at how much they get paid in Union County compared to the rest of the state. They're above average too. These are good jobs to have. So when you're collaborating with South Peabody, and, uh, South Peabody, I'm serious, y'all, right? Okay, South Peabody. And you're working with your high schools and trying to get everybody to turn to the trades. There are opportunities here, and this is a place where you're put to do it. Then you look at manufacturing. And I just said manufacturing is trouble. But here, we still have, even after all of that loss of manufacturing over the last, you know, since 2000, where you still have about one in every 10 people in North Carolina that work for a living and get paid for it are in manufacturing. But here in this county, it's about one in six. And so again, these jobs tend to be higher paying than the average and generally come with benefits, nor higher paying than the state average. And so these are good jobs to have. And people say, well, Dan, why do you spend so much time talking about manufacturing? I said, well, because when you're, say, at ATI, you're, or in your review or somebody like that, you're making things that you're selling to other people. In other words, if Lisa and I are, I'm picking up your loose, this is right here. So Lisa says, Dan, you cut my hair and I'll change your oil. I'm like, okay, so then we have an exchange. But that's not bringing, that's just a move of money back and forth. To have growth, you have to have stuff that you sell to people outside. And so that's what you do when you manufacture because the people who buy the stuff they make at ATI, the people who buy the chicken to make Purdue, you know, that is not just Monroe, Union County, etc. supporting. So that's why it has to be part of it, all right? Then you look at a sector where you have a lower share because construction, manufacturing are higher than the state average. It's in healthcare and social assistance. And so basically, you know, in the state, that's about one in every seven to eight jobs. And here, it's one in every 12 jobs. And so, you know, I drove by Adrian, I drove by Nirvan, drove by all that. And that, those are things to care about, even though those jobs are generally lower paying than the average because something has to be below average, something has to be above average. Is one of the things goes, those are some of the fastest growing jobs is because no matter what happens is people need healthcare. You know, it's like when I was at Golden Leaf, we gave away scholarships. And I would go, say, the young person, what do you want to do? I want to be a nurse. What kind of nurse do you want to be? I want to be pediatric nurse or neonatal nurse. I love the babies. I go, I'm old. How about the old people? Because the old people in healthcare is a growing industry. So I think there's some room here. What does this say? This says, one, as your jobs in the county are more concentrated than usual. It doesn't kind of reflect kind of the diversity that the state has. So there's opportunity there. Two, is manufacturing is part of the future because we do not have to convince anybody who wants to come look at Monroe, look at Union County. Say they come to the Expressway Commerce Mark, which I know is a fancy name for some land over in Southernland, across from that window. What's it called? Windsor Window? Windsor Window. Yeah. So y'all got one of the best 15 economic development sites in the state located right there, which, you know, the state is marketing because trying to get people to Union County because people like, man, we got, what's going on? We're going to do that. So manufacturing, part of the future. And then service sector jobs, the good thing about this is you're not overweight in that, which means you've got room to move. And it's not just healthcare and social systems. It's professional services. It's business services that are often, it's financial services. And somebody said, well, you know, Union's below average in financial services compared to the rest of the state. I said, well, that's because it's a little county to the west of you as all the financial, you know, 99 other counties are as well. So don't get worried about that too much. On the professional business services side, when you're thinking about making Monroe a better, even better place to live, work, or play, you're going to attract people like me to Dan Gerlach LLC Consulting. I can be a lot of places. But what it can be is if I'm a place where it's high quality of life, live, work, play, customers around me, proximity to an airport, proximity to good roads, then hey, you could do a lot there and you could attract those services. But that hasn't been your past, but it can be part of your future. Everybody attracted me? All right. Nobody's falling asleep after lunch. Nor is Chris putting the economist on after lunch. All right, so, oh my gosh. Ah, I was going blind. But let me tell you what this says. All right. Where will the jobs be? And I've already preached on this. But in this area of the world, this region, jobs are going up about 1.2% a year for the next several years. Now, the economists have no, they have no damn idea. I mean, but they're saying it could go up 2% next year or 1% the next. But basically, they think this area is going to be growing faster than the average. So every once in a while, economists are allowed to master the obvious along with everybody else. But I will tell you that that's kind of average. So what does that tell you? Well, construction jobs in the region are supposed to grow about the same amount. And you're going to keep your share in that. Now, it says manufacturing jobs are only growing, you know, less than half a percent. So should you be worried about that and say, well, we can't chase manufacturing? Oh, no. Because if you look in your region about where they're going to make things, it's going to be Union or Gaston or maybe Cleveland. But it is going to be here. So that's something still chase. And then what I want to really pay attention to, the healthcare is the stuff that's a COVID. That's what they, you know, you always need those. But then the professional business services to the far right, why I want to harp on that is to say is figure out ways to make this a greater place to live, work, and play and tell everybody that's an even greater place to live, work, and play because those jobs are growing at 2% a year. The average wage of those jobs will be 20% above the average. So that's what you want, right? Because those people are not going to demand the kind of weight on your water, your sewer, your electricity that other jobs are. But it is going to add a lot of value. And you've been successful in this, in this county to do so. So what's this tell us? One is that highway services has got to be part of your conversation, right? And part of this is just about, once you start generating the momentum, then everybody will catch up. Now, there's going to be accounting firms and legal firms, counselor, and other, every other kind of firms that are going to follow where you have business expansion. So that's going to come with you anyway. But beware if everybody says, oh, services is where it's at. Those are some of the highest paying jobs and some of the lowest paying jobs. So it goes along with it, right? So what we have a danger on is what we want to build is a growing, kind of built on up to build class. And because there's always going to be the jobs, like when I started up, when I was 10 years old, my mama says, okay, you're 10, about time for you to get to work and we'll pay you a dollar an hour. So there are four besides the oldest of four. And my third, my brother decided he was going to protest and he wanted to have minimal wage. So mama said, fine, I'll pay you $3.35 an hour. And then, by the way, we want to take deduction for this, that, and the other thing. And he said, mama, I'm only netting $0.75 an hour. Maybe, maybe you should think about when you start, you know, working with me on this. So the point is, is that jobs starting off especially are lower wage. Just a point of departure on this from the slides. One of the things we have working against us is the challenge of childcare. And I'm not going to here preach on this because I think the budget people who dealt with it, Lisa, if you would have been there, it would have really helped them. But you're doing God's work here. So it is what happens is they got all this money for the federal government to spend on childcare. So they did. And then that's time limited and they ran out and go, oh, God, we ran out of money. How will we know? I'm like, well, they told you they're going to stop giving you the money. And so they didn't have a plan for after that. So what happens childcare? So one of the childcare workers is like, well, we're going to go get a job doing something else. You can't pay us, one. It's what they did when, if they should have did. Two is that then the problem is, is that if you can't get childcare, it's going to be harder to get parents to go to work. And three is you want the people who are the age where they have young children to go to work. Most health problems, maybe anything else. So that childcare thing is going to be something that everybody has interest. The North Carolina Chamber, a proud client of Dan Gerlach LLC, has released a report on childcare and said, you know, this has now become a business challenge, right? Along with housing and some other things. Okay, bonus information. Where they think the highest growth is in the clean energy and healthcare. That's where the fastest growth in the United States is going to be and the fastest growth here. Now, clean energy, there's been a lot of announcements about this in North Carolina, all over the place. I'm not saying that if you say, I don't know how reliable this is, we need to mix. I don't care. The reason why I don't care is because that is going to be part of the portfolio because we're going to need energy for everything. Now, y'all have carbon free energy here. Well done. See how you did that? It's good to own a piece of a nuclear power plant from time to time, apparently. But what happens is that, that you're going to need more power from a lot of sources, especially since coal was no longer a part of it. And you're talking the grandson of a coal miner from Eastern Kentucky. So we'll do it. I saw you look at your watch, bear, I'm moving. Okay, so here we go. Other measures of economic activity. So you spent some time today talking about your sales tax distribution, which, man, that, I used to have long hair when I worked on that. I had to cut it all off because of baby hair stain on it. But here is the sense of what's going on in Union County. See how these blue bars go up? So back about 20 years ago, is that Union County, when you go and you buy something here, is Union County merchants accounted for about a little over 1% of the total state sales tax collection. Has nothing to do with all your stuff. Talk about this one. Has to talk about economic 50. Today is like 50% more, like 1.6% or about 50% more of the share of the total stuff born in North Carolina. Now, what's happened with sales tax? It's gone up fast. Why? Because in 2020, what happened right before COVID shut everything down is that the Supreme Court decided to allow the sales tax to be applied for remote sales. What does that mean? Means Amazon started collecting sales tax on it. And this was not a bad thing. Why one is because Dan Gerlach speaking, me only, not for the city of Monroe, now for your employees, not for any y'all. Thought this is a good thing because the bricks and mortar retailers, who are the ones who sponsor your Little League teams, do everything like that, they had to pay for, they had to collect the sales tax. And here are these other guys who directly competing with them did not. So which one is everybody paying the same? Everybody, if you're in that business, you have to collect. So they did. And because what happened during COVID? What did you see in your neighborhood? I know what you saw. Amazon trucks. Because you're sitting there going, oh, God, why me? Oh, God, my chair. Something's wrong with this chair. It's done, I'm old, I'm going to get me a new chair. And then I'm going to, God, I'm tired of looking at this wallpaper. It's been there 20 years now. I'm going to do something to that. Now, well, now I got a new chair. Now I need a desk. And so you started buying stuff, right? So sales tax went, that's a technical term for, went up. Now what happened, I thought, but sooner or later, the party is going to be over. So I'm watching these numbers in the state. I watch them every day. But I will tell you, the party is not over yet. Sales are holding. The consumers are doing their job. And they're saying, I don't care what they're saying to the campaigns right now. You may be feeling pain, but inflation is a tax collector's trend in some ways. Because as these things go up, I'm not for inflation too much. But what I'll tell you, it does help your sales tax go up because of percentage of that. If you want some, sometime when we're in an unofficial setting, I'll tell you when I worked for Mike Easley, when the gas tax went up, that, you know, and I was the only one left to comment on it. Not today. Okay, so other measures of economic 50. So the good thing is you're growing. And here in Monroe, you're growing quick. All right, so the other measures of economic 50, let's look at income. I know you don't get a share of income taxes, right? I know that. But it measures this. So think about this. Wait, Union County accounted for 1.4% of the state's workers in 2021. They accounted for 3% of the total state income tax collections in the state. So what does that mean? It means generally that people here are making more money than in other places. So one of the things you would argue about when, have any of you heard of the economic development tier system? Yeah, okay. So what happens is you're paying into the system and you want your fair share back. And so when I used to work at the Golden Leaf Foundation, did a lot of work in very, very small rural areas. They're like, Raleigh and Charlotte get everything. I'm like, yeah, but in Raleigh and Charlotte, the residents are also paying into state services that benefit you. So remember that. So we feel very bullish about Union County. So the expenditures, the dollar sign means consumer expenditures are holding up. The income tax forecast, well. Here's what the economists did. The economists for years, they're like, okay. And I'll give you a story. So when I was at, I used to work in New York State, don't judge. I used to forecast the lottery. So one year, I said, okay, I think the lottery is going to bring in a billion dollars. Then it brought in 800 million dollars because somebody hit the damn thing every week. So the jackbox never got that big, but okay. So then the legislative leaders I worked for, they all were like, what are you doing? You're hitting it, you're stupid. So I said, next year, I said, okay, I think they're going to bring in a billion dollars, but I'm just going to tell them 800 million. And sure enough, came into the billion. They're like, Dan, you're, geez, look, you gotta do this. So the lesson for the revenue forecasters is to be conservative. And so they thought they were conservative. It turns out like every time they turn around, look, more money show up in Raleigh. It's a miracle. And this time, nope, didn't happen. Because this time they said, we're going to get more money. I think we'll have another billion dollars to deal with. Turns out they didn't have all that. That the income tax collections, when they thought they were going to get in February, when they actually looked at what came in April 15th, didn't come in as well. So I started to get nervous about this. This is the economy jittering. It turns out that it is not the withholding tax. How many of y'all have withholding paid, taken out of your check every time you go to state, federal government? So at least when you have to pay in April 15th, it doesn't really catch by surprise. Well, those are holding, so it's good. So it's not like people pay late, all people like to make less money. What it does mean is that people on their capital gains and all their dividends, everything, maybe not as much of that. But that's not as much of a problem as if the withholdings have been on. So the economic development pipeline, so let's talk about this, right? About projects and stuff like that, is showing resurgence. So for a couple of years, it would slow down and we had all these wins and the economic development people like, we are so the man. I mean, the ones who were men said that. We were a man or we're so the woman, and we're going to dominate everybody. And all of a sudden, hubris has a price. And, you know, these projects started slowing down. And now they slow down because whenever you get next to a presidential election, companies stop making decisions. They're going like, we're just going to take a breath and kind of wait and see. Exacerbated by the fact that you're already in here. Are we going into recession? People are like, I don't know if I want to go and build a whole new, People are like, I don't know if I want to go and build a whole new, open a new branch of my business, open a new location, relocate a whole bunch of people, whatever. If I don't know the demand's going to hold up. I was the guy who thought Dell Computer was in the paper saying, Dell Computer, don't worry, these jobs won't be here forever. It's not like a typewriter. And that lasts about three years, and they shut it down. So you don't, they're being a little bit hesitant. But I'm telling you, more and more groups are looking at North Carolina because it's a great place to be. So I'm excited about that. So I think you've got something ahead of you. Now, the economic development pipeline, when all the people in this profession, what they talk about is manufacturing. Why do they talk about manufacturing? Because the economic development people are paid to compete. So if you're going to open a Chick-fil-A, a Chick-fil-A, you may not give incentives to that because you're like, well, it's not like we're competing for Atlanta for that. I mean, you're going to put the Chick-fil-A there or not. I mean, whatever, right? But if the manufacturing plant make a part for automobiles or aerospace here, let's talk about aerospace here in Monroe, then you're like, oh, they could do that here, they could do that Wichita, they could do that Seattle, they could do that Charleston. I mean, then you're like, oh, you got to pay a little more attention. It's more competitive. So that's why manufacturing's part of it. The manufacturing we got coming is more utility intensive than it has ever been. So a few years ago, if you had so much about, you know, your consultants here earlier and I don't want to compete with Eric, but I'll tell you this. If you had enough water and sewer and electric capacity, you kind of, it was all about the same. Now the demands are 3X, 4X for water, sewer, and electricity compared to what they were looking for a few years ago. In the industries that are growing the most, paying the best, investing the most, pay attention property tax collectors in your community. So when you read about the billion, $2 billion, $3 billion plants that are out there, and it used to be, these things take along like unicorns, or like Notre Dame national championships, like one every 30 years. But now it's more like, you know, Alabama, it's every other year or something. So I can't tell you how much that pains me. But they're all over the place. So that's a lot of property, property to tax. But it is also a lot of power in water and sewer. So as you plan ahead, it's good. Clean energy is hot, and I don't care who's, I do care who's elected president because I'm an American. But I will tell you, doesn't matter who's elected president, in terms of the clean energy, that's going to continue to be part of the conversation. May not be as subsidized as it might say. Food manufacturing, when I think of, when I think of, you know, some manufacturing, I think of ATI, I think of Purdue, think of the, you know, the great agriculture county that you are here in the agricultural community that Monroe's had a history of, it's coming back. And I'm working with the North Carolina Department of Agriculture. They got a new program called ENCAMPY, Agricultural Manufacturing Processing Initiative. And we just gave out some grants, it's on the website, take a look at it, to people. Basically, well, because what happened is, is that when we grow stuff here and raise, you know, livestock here, what we don't want to do is send it hundreds and hundreds of miles away to get processed because it costs our farmers a lot, it costs our growers a lot, and we'd rather have jobs. So we are working on that. We still have money available. And there's been some couple conversations here in the county, but that's coming back, and that will, that is growing part of this. And then reshoring. When you look at the conversation of whatever at the national level, and I think at the state level, one of the things we learned in COVID is that it may not be the best idea to depend on other nations, especially other nations hostile to our own, to control, you know, manufacture of drugs, medical supplies, all those raw materials. So I think if you hear all this conversation about Harris and things like that, what you're really thinking about is not stopping the stuff from coming in, but building up our own capacity to compete and subsidize again. That's what they did with semiconductors, right? They said, okay, these plants, you know, you see the announcement in other states, and we'll speed up in, up in certain part of our state. Talk about this. This is happening because the United States government has decided, we're going to invest to make sure we can do this so that hostile powers don't control our supply of everything we depend on from that, from this computer, to my cellphone, to my car, to everything else. So there's an opportunity for that as we reshore, all right? I yield the balance of my time. So let's recap. One is Monroe on fire. Two is Union County likewise. Three is you've got extra capacity to handle it in terms of your human talent, in terms of the livability of a community where people really want to live and play and work. And three is, you know, I think the future is right here, and I'm concentrated on manufacturing is who I got here, not professional and business services because it's, because you want to have a neck, you know. My pitch to customers is, is you want to have a diverse economy. You don't want to bet on just the one thing, right? Because we have, this state is littered with towns a lot smaller than this one. Of communities where they said, oh, this plant is going to be here forever, until it wasn't. And then now they're stuck. So y'all don't like that. I'm happy to answer any questions. I've had a lot of fun doing this. I'm entertaining myself. Nobody's asleep, so it's good. Mayor, I yield to you. It's good to see you again, by the way. Tell anybody if they have a question or not.
Dan, thank you first and foremost for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Informative and exciting at the same time. I would say, as far as any, you were speaking about agricultural grants and things like that.
I was.
Okay. So can you direct us a little bit more towards anything that we need to know, like any grants that might be still available out there right now for the remainder of the year?
Yeah, I got it. Okay, so let me take a step back, Mayor, and be broader than that. So let me talk to you about some of the work I did with the Economic Development Partnership in North Carolina, which is our, you know, they're the ones who do all the selling in the state. So they administered a site development program because one of the things we found is that a lot of these businesses, they, you know how it is, they want the permits right now, they want a site right now, they want to, you know, to be ready to go. The time, once they make the decision about whether they want to be, the time between that and being operational has really accelerated. So what happens is, is that we invited, the state invited sites from all over the place to put in for, where's your best site? So we could develop them and market them, and give some state money towards getting the sites more ready. So we don't have a customer that comes and then will say, oh, it's going to be three years. Now, if it's one year, that could make all the difference in competitive morale. So this site I mentioned across some windows and windows is one of those sites. And so there will be applications opening within the week for the due diligence and things like that to help develop that and 14 other sites. So that's good for you because you're one of 15 who can apply. We've already limited the pool. Then on the agriculture side, there's about 7 million left through the June of next year. And we made 12 million in grants, but the grant's been a million, 2 million in size. So, and this is a county we pay a lot of attention to, a community we paid a lot of attention to, is, say if you want to process livestock, right? And you say, oh, look, the farmers are like, oh, we have to ship everything to 300 miles away, or we've got spare capacity at our chicken houses, or wherever, it'd be great if we had some processing nearby to handle this. And that's, that can be applied for. The companies, sir, apply directly to the department. And it can be used for construction, or equipment, or hard assets to use for that. And the way we'll measure it is not just jobs and capex, but the way we'll measure it, sir, is, is kind of benefit to the farmer. So like we have dairy up the road in Arnold County, they said, okay, we're going to go from buying, I'm making up a number now, but say 10 gallons of exodus, but 10 gallons to 80 gallons, you know, over a period. Like, oh, the dairy farmers don't have to schlap this clear to, you know, to Roanoke to get processed, they can do it right here, have a fire. And there's other stuff all, you know.
And you were obviously insinuating that the speed at which we can get some of the things done internally in a municipality matters a lot in the decision-making process.
Yes, because there are cities right now, sir, where, where they have, okay, we've got this great site, and the company's like, but you're on moratorium. So what you don't want to do is stay on the list and survive in advance. So the more capacity you have, and I can't, but I can say, is that the more capacity you have available, the easier it is for the consultant and all the company, you know, we think this could happen more. Yes, sir? I'm sorry.
We want to get on your calendar for deeper dive on this.
All right. You do? Okay, that's what we do. All right. Counselor?
So when you say hard assets in terms of these grants?
Yeah.
Would that include land, like, for instance? If the city of Monroe wanted to develop an agribusiness park for food processing, food storage, coal storage, if there's a shortage?
Yeah.
Would, would, and you wanted grant assistance to purchase the property to develop that, is that something that?
All right, so let me segregate the question. The question was, if Monroe were to hypothetically develop an agribusiness park and provides like coal storage, which is a shortage of, and some other things, could they apply for that? The answer to that from this agriculture plot I've been speaking of is no. Because what we want there is a private sector company to do that with, you know, generally we've been looking at expanding existing operations, although some kind of new operation is sure. However, if you're to take, you know, a park that is, that is developed, or you're thinking of doing it, there's some other grant opportunities, Mark, that you might be able to take advantage of. But there is a rarity of buying land. That is, that could happen with the site development programs, but that is very hard to do.
We still want to get over to the capital.
Yeah, I'm not trying to slay your dreams here, when I had that reality game, like wounds. But no, site, land, like. Oh, thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate your attention.
Any other questions from the audience? Anybody?
Okay, so I left my number up here. And Dan Grok LC is very low admin. That's my number. To give me directly, that email's also correct on my internet. Look forward to, I guess we're going to see each other soon.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you so much.
What a wealth of information. Dan, thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedule and coming down to Monroe to show us during the lunch hour. Wow. You heard it right there. Monroe, I think the quote is, Monroe is on fire, right? And we heard it this morning about all of the, the future that Monroe has. I was talking with someone during the lunch break, and they were referencing the speaker of this morning and all of the news that we had shared about financials and the trajectory that Monroe is on. And the person made this comment, and I had to write it down because I want to remember it. It was more of a statement than a comment. The statement was, let's be great. We have an opportunity. Let's be great. And I think that really sums it up. And that's a lot of good information while we're here today. So, do we need a five-minute battery break, or we need to go, we can go right into the next topic? And again, if you need to, if you need to get you another glass of tea or what have you, please have yourself. So we want to go into, shift gears a little bit, from all of the financial information that we were sharing this morning, into some more, into a more operational-focused afternoon. Water Resources, as you have seen, is, is one of our largest businesses. And the infrastructure required to provide these services is not cheap. Monroe has actually been producing, in fact, I'll tell you this, several months ago, I was looking at a Sandborn Insurance map from between 1900 and 1950. And for those of you who don't know what Sandborn Insurance maps are, that Sandborn was a mapping company for, is part of an insurance group that wrote fire insurance. So they were underwriters for the fire insurance companies in the beginning of the 1900s, okay? And at that time, there was, there was a lot of growth, particularly across the South. And they would go to every town with a team of surveyors. And they would measure, they did, they measured the width of the streets, they made notes, they measured the footprint of all the buildings. They made note of the construction materials of the buildings. It wasn't wood, but if it's wood, it's easily going to catch on fire, or where's the nearest fire hydrant? Or where's the nearest source of water? Now, all of that was laid out on the map. Particularly in Monroe, for the Monroe map, they noted that right in the Five Points area, right? Y'all are all familiar where the city's fuel station is, right there at Five Points, and right in front of where Parks and Recreation or Property Management has your maintenance shop and all that. Right there on the corner, where that open air equipment shed is, was a building called Monroe Light and Water Company. And that was in 1900. And on that same property, Monroe, in cooperation with the Seaboard Airline Railroad, drilled two deep water wells. Those wells are still on that property. One of them is over 1,000 feet deep, and one's like 950 feet deep. But both of those wells each had well pumps that would pump 1 million gallons of water each a day. The pumps were powered by two steam engines called dynamos that had to be hand-maintained every day. So you had, you had these steam engines that somebody was monitoring every day that produced electricity for the downtown area of Monroe, and pumped the water into the water system that then provided fire protection. Okay? So all of that in that area. So how we, you know, Monroe's been in the business of power and water business for a long time. Some of that infrastructure, that the water, wastewater collection, water, water distribution system is still in the ground, and we're still using it. And what we're coming to find out, particularly on the wastewater side of things, is that some of our infrastructure, agent infrastructure, might have a few leaks where rainwater can get into the system. And when rainwater gets into our collection system, it takes away the treatment capacity of our wastewater treatment plant. And many of you have heard me talk about this topic, is that absolutely, I would consider one of the top priorities that the city has, we have got to find, the points of inflow into our waste collection system. Just on, just doing the rough numbers, is estimated that we could recapture 1 million gallons worth of treatment capacity today at our water plant, at our waste treatment plant. What we'll hear, that we heard this morning, we'll hear more about it this afternoon, is that the high side number for, for building, 1 million gallons worth of treatment capacity is $47 million. Do we want to say $47 million or not, you know? So what we, what we're going to talk about, start with this afternoon, is inflow infiltration. So Scott Clark, would you come and introduce your presenter of this for the inflow infiltration piece? Scott and his team have a plan for addressing the inflow infiltration issue. We want to go into that. And then there's, as part of this, there's a very important project that will impact our golf course. So between Scott and Pete, I want y'all to hear about that. So you'll know what's going on with two major assets in the city. And then we're going to finish up this afternoon, as far as the presentations are concerned, talking about the wastewater treatment plant replacement. So Scott?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So we are working with CHA Solutions, and CHA Solutions is helping us develop a systematic approach for locating inflow and infiltration. So they're going to share some information, basically defining what inflow is, what infiltration is, give you some examples, and then discuss our, provide a little more information on our systematic approach, utilizing flood monitors. And so we've worked, well, we have nine permanent flood monitors, we're going to utilize these, and then we'll also use temporary meters to relocate these throughout the collection system and try to locate where the rainwater's coming from. So Mark Lambert with CHA Solutions, I've worked with him, had the opportunity to work with him many, many years, and CHA Solutions. So Mark, if you wouldn't come up, we'll turn it over to you after Mark, Reg Riser, our engineer manager, will come up and share some information as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for having me. Thank you, Scott. So Mr. Watson, you get a lot of aging infrastructure. A lot of times you hear about aging infrastructure, you might think of bridges and roads and things that are visible, but, you know, water and sewer, obviously, are a sight out of mind, but that's part of aging infrastructure also. So just to give you a little bit of a brief background on CHA, we were previously in Frazier Engineering. We were acquired about two years ago by a company called CHA. Frazier Engineering has worked for Monroe in the past, and we do a lot of work in the area, Charlotte water, water and sewer. And we do a lot of work in the area, Charlotte Water, Water and Sewer Authority of Mary's County, Town of Wayne, we've done some work for it in the past. And then, you know, we're staying by Towne County, a lot of clients in South Carolina also. But kind of our niche and what our local office in the Charlotte area does is sewer assessment and rehabilitation. So assessing the sewer, see what's wrong, and then moving into a rehabilitation program to fix those problems that you have. So Scott, I hit on it a little bit, but what is INI? What is infiltration and inflow? Infiltration is the water that kind of gets into the sewer system through the broken pipes and through affected pipe joints and service connections. It's generally slower and kind of slow to enter the sewer system, but it might stay in the sewer system for days. It's kind of the harder thing to get out because it's mostly down, flow is down in the pipes. Inflow is kind of the quick entry type of stuff that enters quickly into the sewer system and causes, you know, a big spike in the flow data. It's going to go through manhole covers and things where there's a quick direct connection. So those are the two main things that you're trying to get out of your sewer systems as much as you can. Sewer systems might be designed for a lot of this type of extra flow. It's designed for, you know, your typical flow from your house and your businesses and your industries. So there's just not a lot of extra capacity built in for INI, so you want to try to get out as much of that as you can. Just a quick example, this is some flow data. And to kind of show you what happens when you have rain. If you look down at the bottom, the blue is kind of your typical normal flow that occurs, you know, day-to-day, not during a rain event. And then over there on that is the red part of the graph that shows, you know, what occurs during a rain event. You can see, this is actually some flow data from your system. It's from several years ago when we did a flow study here, but it is from your system. And it's not unusual to see this all over. But when the rain occurs, the sewer system spikes, the flow data, flows spikes in the sewer system. And that's what really kind of causes the problems, is taking up your capacity. The first, say, 24 hours there, maybe a little less than that, would be the inflow portion and quick entry portion. And then the infiltration might stay in the system for a couple of days. This one actually is apparently short. You might see it stay in the system five, six, seven days where the flows stay elevated. So I'm going to show some quick example. It's about two minutes long, but it's going to show. Glasses on here. So like I said, this is about two minutes long, but this is from some video taken from inside the sewer system, basically, which we often do, televise the sewer system. But this is just a few examples of the kind of things that you want to try to eliminate from your sewer system as much as you can. This is the camera, you know, run down the sewer line and get to a joint, you see the infiltration coming in. This is actually coming up, there's some infiltration coming through the manhole wall. You can kind of see it coming through the wall there and adding flow to your sewer system. And I think this shows a little bit more here. I'm going to start showing some more examples here, but this is not uncommon to any sewer system. It's certainly not uncommon to Monroe sewer system, but they were broken. Somehow the sewer got broken there and infiltration coming in. Just get ahead a little bit here, kind of sped up version of this. Some examples of what happens to the sewer in an area where it has a lot of hydrogen sulfide, had a lot of corrosion in the sewer system. And then you see infiltration coming in from the side there, working through fire. That's from not from here, that's from down around the coast. And that is a lot of sand coming in the sewer system.
Are you talking about a re-crease?
Oh, no, I'm not. Thought it was on my slide there. Okay. So that was some infiltration examples, the kind of slower entry. This is some inflow examples, and this is not showing an active inflow. But if you notice there, there's a manhole cover, kind of right in the ditch line. And if you look real close, you'll see that that manhole cover has some holes in it, which is common there. You have the manhole covers. But it's right in the ditch line where, you know, if you get a heavy rain, water's going to be flowing directly into that. So there's the type of things that you want to try to eliminate. This is actually a manhole that's actually doing its job. And we look for these type of things where there's ponding over a manhole cover. And that actually is a good sealed-up manhole cover, but a lot of them aren't. And you can see that it might be in an area of a parking lot or something where it's just going to drain. It can sit there and drain water during a rain event. And then kind of an extreme example, where the creek floods and the manhole is next to the creek. You might see the green pipes sticking up there on the side, that's where the manhole is. So you want to make sure those manholes that are down next to the creek are certainly sealed up where things can be done. So those are the kind of, you know, kind of things that you want to be looking for. So just to give you a little bit of history, there was some previous flood monitoring that was done back in 2016. So it's been several years ago. Not all was performed at the same time. And what you really would prefer to do is do all your flood monitoring at the same time. So you have similar rain events or your system is reacting to the same rain event. And you can kind of judge where things are good and where things are bad if you're all under the same rain event. What was done in 2016, it was done in several different phases, so many different types of rain events. So a little harder to judge where the worst parts of the system were. So what we're about to embark on, we're really just getting started, is kind of a systematic, system-wide INI reduction program to try to get rid of some INI that's taken on capacity in the sewer system and in the treatment plant. We'll install some permanent flow meters for long-term tracking, that's been done. That was actually just done last month. And I've kind of highlighted performance system-wide flood monitoring to quantify and locate. That's really what everything kind of hinges on. Until we can get a handle on where are the worst parts of the sewer system and where should we focus our efforts, we can't do a lot until we do that. And that's something that's coming up soon. But everything kind of hinges all of that, that will give you a roadmap on where to get. After we do that, we can perform some manhole inspections and some smoke testing, where we blow smoke down into the sewer system and try to locate defects for this amount of rainwater and stormwater into the sewer system. So once we kind of target where those worst areas are, where the most INIs being in the sewer system, then we can perform manhole inspections and smoke testing and TV inspections of the sewer system in those high-priority areas. After you do that, we're going to follow up with a sewer rehabilitation construction contract to correct those identified INI defects. And one of the important things that you want to do as you go is to document how, what are you eliminating the INI from your system. You can use that to tell you where you might need to refocus some efforts. And as a, you know, you're done in this area, we're good for now, we go on to another area. So we wanted to try to document that through flow monitoring, putting some flow monitors in the sewer system and having data from before you do rehab and have data after you do rehab to see where you've been most effective and where you've accomplished your goal. Then we want to develop a long-term sewer assessment plan, probably covering at least 10 years. It's not a one-year, a two-year, or a three-year fix. You know, it's probably going to take some time in a system this large to try to get through what you need to get through to make a financial impact. So the short-term schedule, I mentioned earlier, we've already installed some nine-permanent flow meters. I'll show a map of that in a second. Performance system-wide flow monitoring, temporary flow monitoring, I talked about that being something that's important to be able to identify where the worst parts of your system are. I've got them here October through December. That might slide to November through January, if you prefer to do it. When the groundwater is the highest and you're most likely to get your, you know, more widespread, larger rains and lots of isolated type of rains that you might get during the summer. After that's done, we can identify where the worst parts of the system is and where you should focus your efforts. Go into manhole inspections in the winter, smoke testing followed with that in the spring. TV, could be some isolated TVs, some really targeted TV of the sewer system based on what's on. Smoke testing, where it could become part of a sewer rehab contract. But that sewer rehab contract, I would say that we could start doing that next summer. That will probably be the first of many sewer rehab contracts. I think the first will probably be next summer. That's what, do you mean winter 2024?
I'll take you saying winter, June, right?
Yeah, it's coming, yeah.
Okay.
After the flood monitor has done, to kind of guide you where to get. Just a, you know, quick map to show you that we have installed some permanent flow meters in the system. It's good for long-term tracking. It's good for, you know, potential model calibration that might come somewhere down the road to model your sewer system. So it's good to have that long-term tracking. But the temporary flow monitoring that I talked about, we're going to start, you know, next month or the month after, we'll try to do a lot more comprehensive in smaller areas. You can see here some of the footage of the sewer that's collected by each meter, you know, over 100,000 feet. You have something as much as 250,000 feet of sewer. When we do the temporary flow monitoring, we'll probably try to get down in the 25,000 to 50,000 foot range to help you really focus your efforts where things are, where the INIs coming from. Long-term schedule, Scott, as I've already, what I've just showed, in the next year or so, we have manhole inspections, smoke testing, lead into a rehab project. And then I think it's really just more of the same for the next couple of years. Perform sewer rehab, continue with sewer assessment based on what your priority areas were from the flow monitoring. Year three and beyond, continue on. Unless you really pour a lot of money into it initially, it's probably going to be, you know, a 10-year program or so. This is real high-level budget, projected budget type numbers based on what you have. But year one that we're in right now is, you know, we have a contract for $195,000 to do some flow monitoring, manhole inspections, smoke testing, develop a rehab program. Year two, you know, probably looking at a one and a half to $2 million rehab project and then just continue on, you know, for years to come, increasing, you know, by $250,000 a year or so, just to kind of keep up with inflation and, you know, hopefully keep making more of a dent each year and eliminating some INI. So if you kind of look at the big picture again, budget summary, these projections are probably minimums. If you want to be more aggressive to reduce the INI scenario, you probably should pump some more money into that. But, you know, I think it's a good sustainable program, the cost I had laid out there before. If you, again, using some rules of thumb, because we're really just getting started to identify where the problems are, but using some rules of thumb, probably looking at a $20 to $30 million long-term investment over the next 10 years or so. Kind of one of the rules of thumb is that 70% or 80% of the problems might come from 20% or 30% of your system. So hopefully you can really focus now on that 20% or 30% of your system. And that's where the bulk of this money would be spent over the next 10 years or so. Hopefully you're spending money, you know, in those areas where it really needs it and you've eliminated other areas that that can only go to. You're going to have some areas that are relatively new, hopefully you'll not go back in, which will have some areas that are really helpful also. In result, after all that, our new sewer system, less INI, hopefully is the result. If you eliminate some INI and reduce flows at the treatment plant, definitely less OEM because you're going to have a lot of those problems that are occurring, problems that pop up for the maintenance staff that you eliminate. Less sewer overflow, if you have less water getting into the system, hopefully you have less water getting out during a rain event. And that's, the state regulators really look at the overflow, so that's something that you want to attack and reduce, hopefully eliminate. If you take this approach, you should see some results of less INI at the treatment plant in the next three to four years, if you're aggressive. It is, again, it's a long-term program, it's not easy to eliminate, you know, these sources of INI in a short period of time. There's not lots of, there's not, you know, a few small or few big leaks out there. There are lots and lots and lots and lots of small leaks. So it's hard to see the results in a real short amount of time. Hopefully in three or four years, if you're aggressive. If not, maybe over the next 10 years, you start seeing the INI get down at your plant and open back up the capacity. And that's what I have for today. Glad to answer a question you might have about that. I know I had a Jewish grammar subject here today, so. All right, thank you.
If the inflow is coming from a newer supply, like with their stormwater somehow going into the sewer, and you determine that's the case, and that still might be a possibility, I understand. Well, would that solution be, would that solution be a cost to the city? Or would it depend how old the neighborhood was, or is this way too much in theory?
Well, I might have to lean on Scott for that, but generally, you probably would have a one-year warranty period from developers. But generally, you probably would have a one-year warranty period from developers on the side.
That is correct. And it depends on sometimes if it's just one-off from a damage, sewer line might be nearby for collection of catch, or storm or catch basins. We would make immediate repairs because of digging matters and emergencies, it's a very high priority. Getting there, patch the sewer line, if we can patch it, for the pipe patch, we're getting there, doing a day-to-day replace if we have to. If we find that it's more involved and find additional catch basins and find there's cross connections tied over to the sewer system and entire subdivision, there's other recourse that we would have to go down and we'd have to do much more extensive investigation and determine what happened. And we've got mission first step is go in there and eliminate those cross connections to reserve that capacity within sewer system.
Is that still something, is that still something you think is contributing to this incredible level of inflow?
I do not believe that it's entirely coming from new subdivisions. I believe normally we have inspectors that are out looking at the infrastructure, trying to ensure that that does not happen. We do sewer pressure testing on the sewer lines, we vacuum test manholes to try to ensure that that does not happen. I believe it's coming from some of the older areas where we have a lot of clay lines, vitrified clay pipe in the ground. That older pipe is not a gasketing material, only it's just a valve and spigot top where it just slides into some gasket there. Some of the older cross connections may be, if there are already any connections from stormwater into the sewer system, could be where areas, older areas have been revitalized sometimes, and people may have not had direct access, or it may have been easier because there's a sewer line nearby. As we had a main street a few months back, we had an area where we found a lateral connected to a storm drain. But a lot of times it could be where gutters are connected to the sewer system, people's homes and stuff, and that's what smoke testing helps us identify. So, things coming from a lot of the older areas of town, of the system.
So, you have a scheduled replacement for this older sewer line?
Correct. Typically renewed or rehabbed. So, we will typically slip line those areas with the cure-and-place line. But yes, we do, we'll go in a pipe first and pull in a new pipe.
So, some of what you see here, I mean, they're going to be one in the same. You're going to find inflow in some of these areas where it's older pipe being sued. It's almost sort of done, and it's not as though they cost us this amount, but we may be replacing that or trying to service that anyways. So, it just gives us a better opportunity to target that.
It does. We have a backlog of six and eight-inch pipe. We have, over the past 10, 15 years, have done a lot of sewer pipe bursting, replacing six and eight-inch clay pipe, pulling in a new pipe and basically renewing those areas. There are still some areas, we still have quite a few jobs that we need to go in and do, and we'll continue to work on those areas. But as the flow monitoring data becomes available and we find where we need to pull off of those areas, and then get more involved with the high priority areas that C H A Solutions identifies of where the significant sources are coming from. So, we will postpone some of that work and go focus on high priority areas. You kind of refocus our efforts from a combined approach.
So, when you look at 20 or 30 million over 10 years, I mean, it may not quite be that, because some of that, some of the areas where you're focused is what we're going to try to replace anyways.
That's correct.
So, it's not as though it's going to be that full amount.
That's correct, yes.
When these problem areas have been identified, how long will it take to repair some of these damages?
That depends, some of the areas, it depends on if we find where we have a line crossing the creek for instance, you know? And when flood arises, it depends, we will prioritize those, the first ones is where the significant source are coming from and money and budget. We can do find and fix contracts, as what a lot of utilities do. They go out and help as they go out and smoke test. They have contractor resources that have, and we have a very well-versed, very highly skilled internal workforce as well that replaces a lot of pipes and stuff, and we do a lot in-house. So, a lot of times we can drop what we're doing and reappropriate resources to focus on it and probably take care of it no more time than a minute or so. We've got a lot of skill sets that utilities do not have.
I would say when you find there's really big ones, that big problem, you can fix that, prioritize that first. But a lot of other things are just going to be the normal typical problems that add up system-wide, it'll take a lot of time to do this.
Any other questions? Thank you. Rich Reiser, our engineering manager, will come up and provide a little more information on inflow infiltration, and he'll also discuss more specifically what our efforts have been earned fast and what we're doing currently.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good afternoon. Thank you for being able to give me this presentation. We're sort of going a little bit different direction than what Mark has had, that is a long-term, long-system-wide approach. What I wanted to provide today was more of a construction sort of how inflow impacts the city, the wastewater treatment plan, what inflow infiltration is, and show you how that changes and what infiltration will do versus if. And then particularly, I think, we'll show you what the point of the past year and what will be in the future. Inflow sources are very much, Marshall is a great sources. There are the animals, the low places, buildings, there's, there we go. Building downsides connected with sewers, storm sewer cross connections. Infiltration is the animals, the sewer mains, the sewer lattices. As you know, you've got an old system, an old system that will be joined. One thing is thought that most of the infiltration, or a good portion of the infiltration shall we say, is coming from sewer lattices. That's the line that goes from the mains of the house. A broad estimation is that we've got a total of about 2.1 million feet of sewer in the ground. That includes mains as well as lattices. Of that, we know we have about 1.5 million feet of sewer main, which leaves 600,000 feet of sewer lattices. Two-thirds of those are on private property. There's nothing we can really do about that that's on private property unless the property owner wants to do something for us to do, to tap into. We do have a CCTV system called a lateral launch that will actually go up into a lateral from the main, but it only goes so far and it doesn't show us really the entire run that would be perhaps problematic back closer to the house or structure. Trying to understand I N I, imagine you've got two five-gallon buckets. You've got a garden hose that's flowing 10 gallons per minute, okay? You can empty one of those buckets in 30 seconds, so every bucket gets filled once every 30 seconds. That's your 10 gallon per minute. You need two buckets. Now, if that runs for 100 minutes, you end up with 1,000 gallons of volume. Now, imagine that same 1,000 gallons of volume, but only instead of 100 minutes, it comes through in 25 minutes. So, now your flow rate is four times higher than what it was before. Your two five-gallon buckets aren't going to do it for you. So, you need two 20-gallon buckets. That is the impact of inflow. It's quick, it's large volume, and it requires large pipe and large expansion. Another way to look at it, and these are real numbers from our wastewater treatment plan, in 2022, it was a relatively wet winter and spring, as you can see. The high flow numbers helped contribute to high annual average day flows, which is taken at the end of the month in December. So, you can see that we were at, what, 72 million gallons per day average and using 70% of the plant capacity at that time. Now, if you skip over to '22, it was a drier year, less rainfall, less inflow, less infiltration. Therefore, your average monthly flow would reduce. So, now we're only using 60% of the plant capacity. That is how inflow and infiltration impact, inflow really does, because that drives your high average month numbers up, and therefore we have to have more capacity to be able to utilize it. I N I is not only living in Monroe, it's not a county issue, nor North Carolina, it's a countrywide issue, and it is also common in many developed countries. So, we're not alone in this. What are the impacts of I N I? The public and environmental health. You have sewer spills that get into swales, ditches, storm systems, ponds, streams, lakes, even our own lakes. Lake Twilly, which is our primary reservoir, has the possibility of sewer spills along Stewart's Creek that could get into it. Lake Lee, which is one of our reserve reservoirs, has the possibility of sewer spills along Richardson Creek, which is the primary feed at Lake Lee. We pump from Lake Lee over to Lake Twilly periodically for volume purposes. That is how it could be public issues, public health. Expense, you've already heard about the expense of the wastewater treatment plan expansion. It's estimated at 90 to 100 million dollars at the current design. But there's also expense on the collection and conveyance system. The master plan that's used to tell us what size of pipe we need at build-out for an area has to utilize a peak flow number, a peaking factor, to be able to address what will eventually be issues. I mean, any sewer system that goes in the ground today will eventually have I N I issues. Now, that peaking factor is based on the wastewater treatment plant's peaking factor. So, if we can locate sources of inflow, lower that peaking factor in wastewater treatment plant, we can then downsize some of the pipes that we were having to put in under the original master plan, saving who knows how much money, but it's going to be a fair amount. Just for the build-out, the estimated cost of construction is right over 48 million dollars. Now, the next three slides show the different sewer basins and what the improvements are being called for. This is Stewart Creek. The heavier blue and green, the heavier lines are the upgrade pipes, and there's pump stations in purple up there that will be upgraded, larger pumps, larger wet wells. Everything is, it's not cheap. Let's go down. This is Bearskin. It picks up most of the city, center-city area, comes right down through. It's got a fair amount of upgrade. As a matter of fact, C I P shows some happening starting next year. Richardson Creek is the problem area big time, and you can see it, $23 million estimated cost to do what's needed for build-out. We have been working to find sources of I N I and eliminating sources of I N I. Televised nearly 223,000 feet of sewer, and that has been just in the recent past, year and a half or so. That's through city crews as well as contractors. We've done die testing of both storm systems and sewer systems. We've CCTV'd or televised nearly 31,000 feet of sewer. Pipe bursting, we've put in 2,100 feet, and that's been done by internal staff working for Water Resources. We've put in nearly 4,000 feet of cure-and-place pipe, fixed and repaired 25 manholes. We've lined 68 manholes. We've also got a device called Smart Cover that is on seven different locations, and that helps to address S S Os, which are sewer system overflows, by telling us that the level of the manhole is rising. And that gives us a chance to get out there and see what we can do to prevent that. We've got a system that was used by a consultant on, it's called an High Tracker, and again, it's a device that goes in manholes, measures flow of water into the manholes, and what it does is starts to help pinpoint where you've got inflow issues more than anything. Water Resources Department is going to continue to do efforts. There are going to be additional smoke testing as it seems fit, additional CCTV work. We're going to continue to monitor the Smart Covers. We do outfall walks prior to and after storm events. Continued system analysis through the C H A program. We're going to continue to do sewer lining projects and sewer pipe bursting projects. Any questions on that? There is some heading at the golf course on the Richardson Creek Outfall, which runs right down through the middle of four or five of the fairways. We've met with Pete and golf super, the course superintendent, course manager, and have discussed what processes are going to be, and what I'm going to do is give you a quick heads-up on what's coming. Okay. CCTV work by the city found issues with about 500 feet of sanitary sewer that the whole top of it was deteriorated, broke. I've got a slide next to them that will show that. It's a critical piece of infrastructure in the city, and if it were to fail, ramifications would not be good at all. It goes across the fairway, the holes of fairway, a fairway of holes one, three, four, six, seven, and eight. So, it's encompassing a lot of the front nine of the golf course, and literally if you've played the golf course, you've seen the manholes out there. I always tend to hit to the one on four. This is the CCTV video. You can see on the middle, that's a really good view, that's a fair-sized craft, but the pipe is actually opened up. Again, as I said, that's a critical asset for the sewer system in Richardson Creek. That's the main line. The entire Richardson Creek outfall is slated to be replaced or rehabilitated per the sewer master plan. The deteriorated condition of those pipes- The deteriorated condition of those pipes that I just showed you have prompted more immediate action for those areas, and therefore we want to get in and get them lined, at least to help provide some structural integrity to the pipe. In order to do that, to maintain the least amount of surface disturbance, we've chosen a method of cure-in-place pipe rehabilitation. It requires minimum excavation, and it will be, won't be as damaging to the fairways themselves, which is what we want to avoid at all costs. There are several different forms of cure-in-place pipe installation methods. We would lean towards and are looking at utilizing UV curing, which has a smaller vehicle footprint and therefore hopefully less disturbance on the site. View on the left, your left, my right, is the vehicles that you would expect to see for a UV cured installation. On the right, your right, my left, is the vehicles you see burning a steam cure. They're big boilers and it's just a big footprint of vehicles and you make a big mess. So we want to try to retain as minimal footprint as possible. So the first thing you have to do is you're going to set up bypass pumping, because we can't do this work with flow going through the pipe. So where we'll be setting up bypass pumping at is just on the other side of hole six, which is over towards Rosa Drive. There's a manhole that we'll be using for pump, for bypass purposes. Then we'll have to put in a temporary force main that's going to be laid on top of the ground. It will run basically through the middle of the golf course and discharge into a manhole down by 601. And that way, we can get in there, get this work done. Unfortunately, with the pipe on top of the ground, it's going to restrict access to golf on the front nine because there's no way to get over this pipe. It's going to be probably a 12 inch, if not a little bit smaller. So that's one impact to the golf course that is not damaging unless you want to call damaging financially. Then they'll have trucks go in and clean and CCTV the pipe to make sure that there's no obstructions or anything that would prohibit the installation of liner. Lastly, the liner will be installed. Now, these are what you can expect to see as far as vehicles on the site. You'll have a vector truck that will use for cleaning. You'll have a CCTV truck or a trailer. Usually smaller units of the off-road type that's shown there will work. And then you'll have the vehicles themselves that will be doing the UV lining and curing. Access to the manholes, we are going to try to keep off the fairway as much as possible. It's a little difficult to see here, but I've got a red box there, red box there, and a red box over here by 601. We're going to be dealing with contractors that believe they can go through multiple sections of the sewer pipe with the liner without having to be out on the site, well, of course. So the only place we may truly be on course is going to be a hole six. We'll be working two directions from each one of those manholes so that we're getting the entire runs that we need to do. As far as access goes, we'll probably be going down the cart paths as much as possible, hugging the tree line where it's possible to do such. The existing access to the maintenance building can be used, which will keep us off of the fairways. We'll end up being out in the practice area, and then there's access off of Highway 601 down by where the substation's at that will be access also for their equipment. Course operations impact, like I said, the front nine is going to be closed during the project undertaking. The primary reasons for safety are the workers. Is there wealthy personnel out there? And like I said, this sewer is right in the middle of those fairways. So for our guys or their guys to be out there and people hitting golf balls at them, that's not a good thing. Bypass pumping force main will be installed above there, like I initially said. Now, the only excavation that we've been placed is we're thinking the force main may be cut under the cart path at a couple places, so that there is access at least for maintenance vehicles, but not necessarily for golf. Restoration of any damage to the golf course will be completed purely course superintendent direction. It's their course, they know what they need to do and what they need to get it back to its original condition. Backed with topsoil, seed mix, mulch, as well as asphalt, any disturbed damaged areas. Timeframe, we're looking at somewhere near the end into the middle of January. That timeframe was selected in conjunction and with discussions with the golf course with Pete. Total time is expected to be no longer than six to eight. Depending on contractor, it could be as short as four. And the timeframe was selected, like I said, in cooperation with the golf course. Are there any questions? Pete?
I'll just give a little bit of information. I don't like that timeframe. I wish it was shorter. And at the golf course, we understand the scope of this project. We did acquiesce to the, to the front nine being closed for safety issues plus bridges. To have that visual, to see that up close, it's a line, a pressurized tube above ground from across the entire golf course, and within that tube is some of the stuff that you saw in the previous slide that you said was saying. So, so we feel it's appropriate to get this work done to close that nine for their worker's safety, and we don't want our golfers out there dealing with it. There is financial implications. Scott and his crew will compensate the golf course now. The golf course during that time of year, in a December, we average roughly $15,000 a week in revenues, so we will be losing roughly $15,000 a week in revenue at the golf course. We will not lose that much because we'll keep the back nine open, so people will basically play the back nine twice. It's not as fun and it's not good. We understand the need for this project, and we are a city operation, so we support it 100%. But I just want to let you all know that there is financial impacts on the golf course side of things, so don't come yelling when we're not exactly where we need to be, if that makes sense. And I'm happy to answer any question. Our maintenance shop is, is in that general area, but with the underground and some of it getting that pressurized tube in different places, our guys can still get to where we need to. One of my key concerns is in the initial proposal. I want when it's done, the construction company to put it, the golf course back to as much in the same condition as they get there on it. And I know that's hard because they have the big, but I don't, we really don't want to have to deal with major ruts and damage on our fairways and stuff like that as much as possible, so we'll try to hold them as much accountable as we can. With that, from the golf course side, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Would there be a chance of regenerating restoration of that iconic front line with this, I don't know, damage?
It, it could be. We, we have some preliminary plans for some, some major renovations to the front nine, lengthening holes, putting the green complexes back to the original Donald Ross. It is a Donald Ross golf course, one of the last ones that Donald Ross completed. Donald Ross did Pinehurst Number Two, and that's what it's famous for. If you want to tackle that, I don't think we can do it in conjunction with this because that's a lot more equipment coming back and forth to those places, but I would love to see this city council invest into that within the next few years.
It doesn't seem likely that it was already being dug up, so to speak. Might be a good time, but.
Well, I, I think the big thing is it's not going to be dug up. Because if they had to dig down for these pipes, some of them are 20 to 30 feet deep. That's why I think Scott and his crew determined the curing is, is the best route. So hopefully there'll be minimal disturbance to the greens, fairways, and, and everything else out there. I'm all for renovation out there when you are, so. Thank you.
Thank you.